Okay, so we'll call the meeting to order. Everyone should have the minutes of the October meeting in their packets. Hopefully, everyone has had a chance to review them, and I'd like to ask for a motion for their approval. Motion by Trustee Heck, you have a second. Trustee Jasiewicz. Any discussion or corrections? All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Thank you. I have nothing to report as the chair tonight, so we will move on to the president's report.
Okay, thank you. It is, it is a special evening this evening, and if you look at the back of the room, there's soon going to be in front of the room. We have a nice, nice crowd here to recognize two of our outstanding groups of athletes. Our athletic director, Kevin Jones, unfortunately couldn't be here this evening. He's currently playing Mohawk Valley across the parking lot. So after the meeting, we've done in time, and you want to go see the men, you should be able to see the men, seeing the women are playing right now. But I want to start with our soccer team. And so come on up, guys. And coach. Our soccer team this year had a great season. They had a 10-4 regional record, which ranked them in the top five at season end. They lost a heartbreaking game in the semifinals with 1-0, with 1.8 seconds to go to Mohawk Valley. So it was a heartbreaking loss, but you know, we're very proud of the progress the team made this year. And the region is now from on notice that FMCC Soccer is a contender. So we have a number of individual award winners here tonight. In addition to the outstanding effort the team put in this year, we have some, some athletes who received honors both at the region and conference level. So, and I apologize in advance, Kevin tried to coach me on some, how to pronounce some of your names, but I'm going to get as close as I possibly can. So we'll start with Marvin Koczeko. All right, excellent. Come on up, Marvin. Marvin earned Region Three First Team honors and also Mountain Valley Conference First Team. So congratulations. Next, I want to bring up Roberto Salinas. Roberto earned Mountain Valley Conference First Team. Next, we have Daryl Cabisel. I get, I get close. And Daryl earned Region Three Second Team honors. So congratulations. Curtis is not here this evening with us, but Curtis earned Region Three Second Team and Mountain Valley Conference First Team honors. And Lewis. Lewis Potter Scarborough. Lewis made the Region Three Thirty, so congratulations. And we also have Caitlin Van Huzen. Was also honored with Region Three Thirteen and Mountain Valley Conference First Team. And finally, but certainly, perhaps most importantly, I have the privilege this evening to introduce to you and recognize the Mountain Valley Conference Coach of the Year for the second year running and the NJCAA Region Three Coach of the Year, David Clayton. So very quickly, I just want to read this resolution forward here. So whereas David Clayton has demonstrated success as head coach of the men's soccer team, having led the team to a 10-4 record and a top-five ranking in the region, Coach Clayton was voted Region Three Coach of the Year by his peers. I just want to add at this point that this is the first time that, that between Kevin and I, we can remember that we've had a Region Three soccer coach since the late seventies. So it's. As David Clayton further received further recognition by being named for the second consecutive year as the Mountain Valley Conference Coach of the Year, be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Fulton Montgomery Community College that hereby commends David Clayton for his success as head coach of the Fulton Montgomery Community College and soccer team this 17th day of November in the year 2022.
I'm not really much of a talker unless I run on the field, but.
That's not true, by the way.
It's true. No, we really had a great group, both men's and women's. You know, we had a good group of kids return, and then some, you know, strong kids came in and helped out the team as well. We had a little bit of a rocky start and a couple of games where we played four in five days, which tends to be hard when you're playing 90 minutes. So a few of those losses would have been probably not losses had those been spread out. But you know, the team did exactly what I wanted them to do. Came 1.8 seconds short, which is, like you said, heartbreaking. But everybody knew that we were a top team in the region. All year long, we were ranked number three by the coaches poll behind Jemsey and Perkimer, who fought each other for a spot in the national championship. So when you're playing against teams like we play against that are made up of Division One and Division Two players, you know, these guys did an excellent job. Same for Caitlin especially, kept us in games without her, it would have probably been pretty ugly. So just thank you very much for noticing that, and you know, all the credit goes to the kids because it was the ones that put in all the work. So, thank you.
Coach Euler and the Lady Raiders.
Thank you.
So I'd like to start off just by introducing our, our team. Some, some ladies weren't able to be here this evening, but as you can see, quite a few of them did make it. So first, of course, we have head coach Tina Euler. Coach Mike Devolip did not be here this evening, but we have Madeline Avery, who's one of our captains. Dee Flowers, also one of our captains. And our other captain. Ariana Mielberger. David Johnson. Dana Myers. Crystal McSpirit. Helena Yassani. Did I say that right? Baisini. Baisini? Thank you, thank you. That's why she's one of the captains. Mercedes Lugo. Nelson. And Ariana King. So we just want to talk a little bit about the team achievements this year. They had an overall record of 26 and 6. They were the 2022 NJCAA Region Three Champions. Also the District A Champions. This group of ladies got to participate in the national tournament this year, and they finished eighth place, so we're very proud of them. This time around, we advanced to the national tournament, so that was a huge accomplishment. They had an undefeated Mountain Valley Conference Champion. Chip. Obviously, they were last year, they were the tournament, or they were the Region Three runners-up. They were also the conference champions last year, and their two-year overall record is 41 and 8. So like the men's program, we have some individual honors to talk about as well, and we'll start with, with Captain Avery. So Madeline, will you come on up? Madeline was the 2022 NJCAA Region Three Player of the Year. Mountain Valley Conference Player of the Year. And that would lead you to conclude that she was also First All-Region. Purposeful team. She was also on the national tournament, all tournament team. Sadie? Sadie was a tournament Most Valuable Player for the region. Thirteen. Ariana was Region Three All-Region Thirteen. Conference First Team. Region Three All-Tournament Team. Crystal was Region, Region Three All-Tournament Team. And Yan. Yan. Coach, come on up. So. For the second consecutive year, you are Mountain Valley Conference Coach of the Year. We do have a couple of resolutions that I'd like to present to you. The first one we'll do is, is for the team. So. So the FMCC Lady Raiders volleyball team have demonstrated success. Ladies. This is wrong. Forty-one and eight record over the past two years, which includes Mountain Valley Conference Chips, Ship, Conference Championships. Stuff we're going to say. Both years, and NJCAA District A and Region Three Championships in 2022 with an undefeated 2022 conference season and an eighth-place finish at the 2002 NJCAA National Tournament. Whereas the FMCC Lady Raiders received further recognition with multiple players receiving Mountain Valley Conference and NJCAA Regional honors, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Fulton Montgomery Community College that it hereby commends the Lady Raiders volleyball team for their success in the Mountain Valley Conference, the NJCAA Region Three, and the nation this 17th day of November in the year 2022. Now, coach. This is a resolution honoring Coach Wood. Whereas Tina Euler has demonstrated success as head coach of the Lady Raiders volleyball team, having led the team to a 41-8 record over the past two years, which includes Mountain Valley Conference Championships both years, and NJCAA District A and Region Three Championships in 2022 with an undefeated 2022 conference season and an eighth-place finish at the 2022 NJCAA National Tournament. Whereas Tina has further been recognized by being named for the second consecutive year as the Mountain Valley Conference Coach of the Year, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Fulton Montgomery Community College that it hereby commends Tina Euler for her success as head coach of the Fulton Montgomery Community College Lady Raiders volleyball team this 17th day of November in the year 2022.
Thank you guys very much. So I think it goes without saying, for some of the most, I really wish that we could have had the full team here tonight to be able to recognize and honor everybody. Doesn't feel the same without everyone. Secondly, I really just need to say what an immense honor and pleasure it has been to approach this group of young ladies. Most actually, everybody here who has been with us for two years are graduating, nine sophomores this season. So it's a huge recruitment year for us this year. I'm hoping to come right, you know, right back strong next year and be able to do the same thing. I believe it's every player's dream, but definitely every coach's dream to win a regional title and to make it to the national tournament. Something that I've been dreaming. I have had to have been here for at least 10 years as an assistant coach and a head coach, maybe a little bit longer. I just, I'll live the rest of my life remembering this experience, and I hope that the girls remember the life experiences we've had throughout the season and just really treasure the season we had because not many teams get the season that we have together. I also have to say that we've had an incredible amount of support from everybody from FM. I have to recognize, you know, Kevin Jones for the amount of work that he's put into the volleyball program this year and all of the support. Having him with us at regionals was just, it's just an incredible honor to be able to have the support of your athletic director at regionals running along the bleacher stands, just as nervous and as excited for us to be able to win and pull that out. And just you could see how stressed he was, you know, as much as our coaches were. To have the, the support of the soccer team this year and last year. I don't know that I can ever remember the amount of support that's, I think that our team also provided to the soccer team as well as just having, you know, the support and the, the love and the cheering and the excitement from the crowd. It just, it really helps, but it also, I think it just really creates a lifetime of memories for everybody. And I got to think back for the amount of, you know, just the support that she offers us, the pitchers. It, she makes, she makes y'all look good, right? Yeah. Especially if she gets my eyes open. And then, you know, last but not least, I got to thank Dave for the commitment that he showed our FM volleyball team this year. He put up a wall. We'll put it that way, right? Yeah, and he, he pretty much let us do whatever we wanted as far as who was picking what music and how loud we were playing it. But really, a mental world, you know. I don't know that many schools would have the support from everybody from, from the college to, you know, from admissions to the president, to your athletic director and just your other teams in the school. I don't know that everybody has that same level of support, and I know that I appreciated that this year. Thank you.
It's a good question. No. Uh, no. That's just in the.
Thank you, guys.
I'll give two brief, two brief things that everybody knows about, since we're in public here.
So I have two, two additional items that I'll, I'll make as part of my report. One is that, as you know, we, we recently closed on the sale of student housing a couple of weeks ago. So that the FCA is now no longer the owner of housing, that is owned by a private enterprise. We're still working through the process with the USA to close out the, the obligation, the loan obligation, but they did sign their, their satisfaction of mortgage paperwork and transfer the property. So that chapter has closed and we're moving on. And then the second is just to follow up on the water main break. You know, the, obviously, we've been now a week or so with, with, without water spurting out of the ground, and the repairs have been made. We have some temporary repairs on the pavement just because we, we recognize that the temperatures were going to be plummeting, and, and we begin to spread salt and sand, and that there's no way that the concrete is going to cure in time. So the insurance company did agree with our approach to do just temporary asphalt patches until the warm weather comes in the spring. And so our contractor that we worked with, Newkirk, and our director of facilities wanted me to make sure that I made a point of acknowledging the rapid response that Newkirk excavation had. They, they dropped whatever they were doing and, and came right out and spent three days on campus addressing water leaks as they began to appear that we didn't know were there. And they, they got the repairs done as quickly as they possibly could do and, and have followed up to monitor those repairs and also to get the temporary work done. So we do want to acknowledge the, the fine work and the excellent response that we got from Newkirk. And, and they will be coming back in the spring to do the, the permanent concrete repairs. And as I said, the insurance company agreed with that approach, and, and so hopefully, you know, despite the, the loss of time and the inconvenience of all of that, you know, our, our insurance should cover that. I'm sure we'll see it in our premiums next year, but that's why, I guess, you have insurance. So that is all that I prepared for this evening, but I'm happy to answer any questions about those items or anything else.
Hearing done, I'll remind everyone that the college senate report is in your packets, and I will call on student trustees.
So today, we will be just touching upon some of the things that we have been discussing as, as we do now due to that watering break. We had a bit of an alteration to scheduling for some of our meetings for the month of November. So in terms of the student senate meeting, we were, we kind of had like a last-minute get-together in which a lot of our officers and members, constituent members of the organization was not able to attend. I was able to get some hearsight information from one of the members that wasn't able to make it that day. I was not able to make it because it was a bit of a last-minute scheduling change. But I will give you a brief overview of what we had from the student senate meeting. It was because of the, the low participation due to the last-minute cancellations. It was, it was a shorter reefer meeting, but it was mostly just an overview to begin with. So not much new business was covered, as I stated before. After this month, we're beginning to transition with our new activities represented by Leanne Pratt into the spring semester with new elected officers who replace our December graduates. As I had said in the previous meeting, we will be having multiple officers that have served us for, many of them for two years. And yes, I say we'll be graduating in December early. So we already have the positions filled, and they were going to be going through that transition through the next meeting. And also, we're going to be working forward with Leanne Pratt, who is our new activities director, moving forward with that transition. Additionally, as I had spoken in the last meeting, this was going to be the meeting to talk about financial rollouts for all the clubs and organizations for the students on campus. That was also done during this, and each our club representative, including myself, was given financial information regarding the rollout, the rollout finances. For academics, we'll do a brief overview. As most of, most of us all know, especially myself and my fellow students, this is starting to, we're getting into crunch time of fall semester. A lot of, a lot of our nerves around the night, a lot of studying, a lot of people are starting to crowd in and get some tutoring in. So I'm starting to wind down the fall semester. Early admission students are continuing to fill the common areas and libraries, so that's, that's a huge plus. I see a lot of them all the time. And continuation from the last meeting, nothing but good things to hear. So this is, it's been a great thing to see so much positive participation from our younger students. There has been a noticeable increase in participation in the pre-foral drop-in study reviews and student review program and our teachers who delegate their time to do that for the students. So that is a huge advantage, and a lot of students have been taking advantage of more noticeably as we're getting into the closer, the closer end towards the, the end of the semester. And students who were participating in the drop-in tutoring sessions, I was able to kind of get alongside some of them and ask them if it's been helping them. And a lot of them says that they've had a lot of, a lot of them said they have a lot of positive things to say about it. And a lot of people have had a good reciprocation as well in terms of marks going up and also better results in the classroom, which is what we're all here for, so it's really good to hear. On the other side, a little bit more about clubs. So we still are in, a lot of us are still in the planning stages. Some clubs are starting to take initiative and do some, some on-campus events. My club that I am the head of, the Student Nurse Association, has begun an initiative to start our, our annual Fall Food Drive for the Raiders will be food pantry that started a few days ago, and we have posted flyers and boxes around the campus to notify the student body about this procedure that we're going to be taking through. And I also had them in contact with Robert Town. I sent out a template email and also a picture of the flyer, and we're going to do a mass email, most likely it'll start next week to send out to the student body to get more awareness for that. And club censuses, so I've talked to a multitude of the club leaders. They have told me that most, most of the amounts in terms of our club census is on the lower side this year. This is, this is somewhat anticipated because ever since we hit that, that bit of that roadblock with COVID, a lot of our participation in-person activities has gone down a little bit. So this was something that we anticipated, so we're hoping to get a little more interest in upcoming spring semester. And we're most likely also have more incoming students as well. So that kind of touches upon the, the clubs and the student sense and also the academics portion. This was mostly a brief, a brief overview of the things that we had going on. And then touching upon the athletics, that was an awesome thing that we were able to do for the volleyball and soccer team as I was discussing with my fellow trustees before we had started this meeting. I wanted to touch upon the volleyball and soccer team alike, and it's really awesome to see our small little school and a conference in a region full of these big schools coming out and basically making a team out of athletes with some, with specifications for getting all of these awards. What's so cool to me is I were able to make a small school of a little over maybe a thousand people when some schools are having classes that are bigger than like five, six classes at our school, be able to come together and make multiple athletic teams and be able to make a full roster of just people that got special awards. That, that was honestly really cool to see, and also our coaches, which have been, all of them have been very, very supportive, especially personally speaking during my time as an athletics student here. So that was a really awesome thing to have organized, and I really appreciate that as a student representative for our athletic teams. And then moving forward, just for the general overview for athletics, the census is up for all of our teams. All of our teams for the winter have more people on the roster, on the active roster going into the wear season. Many of the roster sizes have actually doubled, especially personally speaking on bowling team. I am the captain of the bowling team as I was last year, and last year we had five bowlers throughout the year, and we're starting this one with 10. So really, we're looking really, really good to start around the wear season. Hopefully, we're able to retain all the interests. But things look really good on the athletic department. So moving forward, my plan is to just to try to find different ways to see if I could just get the word out about the clubs and the special organizations. just get the word out about the clubs and the special organizations that are offered on campus to see if we can get a little more interest, uh, for that perspective. But in terms of that, it's more of a brief, uh, report that I have today, but I'm more than welcome to answer any questions anybody has for me.
Thank you. We'll move on to the foundation report with trustee Kasim.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I'm going to start, uh, my report with, uh, the 15th Annual Distinguished Alumni Dinner and, uh, Second Annual, um, So, uh, Tower Award, which took place at Holiday on, uh, November 3rd. And we, we had a wonderful trial and Holiday did a fantastic job. So, um, Mrs. Lanty and, uh, Mrs. Bolesley. And, um, they, so far we, um, you know, up to that day, uh, we had forty-one, um, recipient award, uh, uh, for, uh, for the alumni. And that night we had two alumni, which we, uh, and that was, uh, Joel, um, Jan, Emmy's and the other one, uh, dear friend, uh, Mr. Uh, very great. And, uh, we had a wonderful time and, uh, the, the second annual award, Tower Award went to Dr. Rao, Mrs. Rao and the family. And, oh, I have to mention something very important. Our student, uh, our student, um, trustee Evan opened the night and he did a fantastic job. The second thing is a, uh, scholarship, uh, which is, um, for, uh, one hundred ninety, one thousand dollars. Uh, this is for his academic year. And the name of the, uh, recipient along with the donors, it is in the, uh, okay, they gave away and, and that night. And one appeal is, um, getting ready to be made and, um, it's going to be, uh, toward the end of this month. And, um, foundation would like to vote both for, any foundation board as well as trustee. Four hundred percent support. It doesn't matter how much, but as long as we have hundred percent support, uh, we appreciate that. Oh, and by the way, for this, uh, annual appeal, foundation, uh, bring it up to the faculty and staff and they offered that they automatically deducted from their, uh, salary and some of them they already sign up for it. Foundation, uh, starting significant fundraising, uh, which is, uh, for the building of the athletic field. And this athletic field is going to be used, it has one to third purpose. And it's very good, the, um, at the start, approximately cost is in five million dollar. From this five million dollar, um, foundation need to raise two point five million. And, uh, at the dinner, um, foundation, the award dinner, and Mrs. Lanty displayed the, um, the plan, uh, on the Excel for people to watch for the, for the field. And, uh, foundation, they're going to give the opportunity, naming opportunity. And if they are going to bring it to the total trustee, uh, for voting on it. Um, and this is because of, uh, the policies seventeen ninety. The gallery, uh, will, will be open from, uh, December sixteenth until January thirteenth. And the fan artist name is Brianna, um, Wilson. And she's from Shaw. FM, uh, foundation, uh, audit is completed and they are going to bring it to executive committee, um, and then, uh, they are going to bring it to the whole board for January sixth. Golf tournament for twenty twenty-three, uh, is going to be at, uh, Fox Run on May twenty-fifth. And please mark your calendar. And, um, last but not least, foundation will, will be, uh, participating in giving Tuesday, uh, November twenty-nine. It will be on Instagram and Facebook. And, uh, connect to the website for foundation. We die, I don't know. No, I don't think so. Uh, but with that, I conclude my report. If there's no question, you don't have any additions to it. Only comment is that we have to create teams that we should This is going to benefit us because, uh, these days all the community colleges are competing. Uh, and students are looking for what is extra. And that's how we have a beautiful campus and this is, uh, it's going to be added. And I think Mrs. Lanty, Mrs. Lanty will raise two million. I, no, no problem for we love, yeah, it's no problem.
Thank you. We'll move on to finance with trustee Watson.
Thank you. The expense for us are included in your committee during this slide. The expense summary budget versus actual within a period of nine, one, twenty-two, thirty-one, twenty-three, which is seventeen percent of your fiscal year. The main actual expenses and encumbrances are fifteen percent of budget. The expense detailed by department provides by department a detailed comparison of our expenses and costs of budget which is seventeen percent of our fiscal year. Finance statement for the period of nine, one, twenty-two to nine, thirty, twenty-two, which is eight percent of our fiscal year. The revenue from filling activities for nine, thirty, twenty-two for the fall twenty-two semester. This represents twenty-eight point three percent of our tuition budget. Our expenses incurred represent one hundred or seven point two percent of the budget. The budget transfer report summarizes budget transfers between the first month and the contract in four, uh, contracts by during after work, twenty-two. There were no grants to report this on. There is one board motion to approve, uh, budget transfer. The board of trustees approves all budget transfers between budgetary departments that exceed five thousand dollars and all transfers on a full-time salary accounts. This budget transfer for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three pertains to full-time salaries. These funds are being reallocated to veteran line. This was exactly in the respective department. The president residence of the board of trustees approves the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget transfer listed on the attached page. That's a transfer between student activities and advising for sixty-nine thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars.
Would you sponsor that motion? Second, uh, trustee Gardella, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Building at Brown's with trustee Landry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the president has always told my thunder, but, uh, I, uh, I would like to first, um, suffered, uh, at the college, uh, and so it's very fortunate.
Thank you. Moving on to academic affairs with trustee Gardella.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, in the spirit of the Thanksgiving season, I'd like to begin, thank you, um, by thanking President Robin Hiller, Provost Putman, Dr. Snyder, Robert Towne, Robbie DeVito and Larry Goffrey for their support and assistance in launching Elizabeth Candy Stanton Hope Town Association's pre and post-election project through a Stanton survey email to all students and staff. And we certainly hope that all staff here, um, will answer that survey as well and participate. Uh, we were interested as an association in the diversity component of FMCC because our association also wants to encourage diversity among, um, members and among the community members as well. Uh, and seeing how that diversity might have played out in the results of students and staff in terms of their comments, um, on the election issues that they were concerned about and that brought them to the polls. We certainly know that nationwide students turned out full force and that was very, very encouraging. Cause I'm sure Adam will agree and all of us are will agree. Uh, women turned out, so many of the groups that were, uh, expected to come out in force and across the country, voting is very strong, particularly in a mid-year election. So we encourage all of you to do that. Um, we had a print email to all students in September, giving them some information they might consider in order to cast votes. And then we had the survey just go out this week and there will be a reminder. So Evan, do whatever you can to remind people to take that survey, please. Uh, we're really pleased with this town and gown opportunity as we always are. Uh, the Stanton Association was having, uh, an excellent rapport with many groups on campus and much support in, uh, in making the town and gown work. So thank you all. Um, since it is a season for thanks, I'd like to highlight some thanks in the academic report that provost has prepared for us. And that is, uh, a shout out and thanks for Christine Davis, who's the external partnership applied learning director. Um, there was a community fair, uh, on the nineteenth of October. Fourteen employers across the interdisciplinary areas of the college, uh, were attended, in attendance to offer internship opportunities for which we are very thankful. And that's been significantly, um, over the years. And we thank also for the SUNY grant that created the C-four initiative. FMCC, Adirondack, Schenectady and Columbia Green are now called the Canoe Business Education Hub. The FM running program through, is writing its programs through individual studies, uh, for cultivation, lab assurance and dispensary management. Uh, last night FM hosted an info night focused on the lab assurance technician and dispensary management careers. And, uh, a thanks and a shout out to the Veterans Hemp Market in Broadogly, which has been a successful site for hands-on experience in lab, um, tech and store management. And thanks for Charlene Dybals for her leadership in this area. Thanks also to Andrea Springer's work in securing new art articulation agreements with Capital Region Poses for the LPN program. Students accepted here, uh, can earn seven credits for nursing one oh five. Capital Region students at FM will be granted six credits for the successful completion permit one eight three. And then, um, our, our end to the, uh, the DSN articulation for seamless transition to Stony Brook. And the transfer fair here on ten seventeen, uh, brought in thirty SUNY and four private universities to talk about, uh, successful transitions to their places. So, so thanks to Andrea and to the development and to all that helped put that together, sense of major undertaking. Um, you're going to be seeing and hearing more about the gen ed requirements that are changing and all of the FM faculty will be, and all divisions will be involved in that. Vice President Putman will be alerting us about that as it moves along. Social science department is, uh, ready for program review for the six-year action plan. Um, John Armstrong, Eric McGower and Julie Lynn are involved in their areas for that review. Um, we thank St. Mary's HR and nursing staff for the recruitment event on October seventeenth, providing lunch as well. We're thankful to the work of two adjuncts at FM, Ron Sutler, the HVAC instructor who is adding two curriculum options for that program. One is purchase and installing a new heat pump, uh, thanks to the Perkins Grant. And also administering, he's going to administer the EPA six oh eight exam. It's no cost to students, thanks to a newly secured emergency, emergency tech SUNY grant. We welcome Kelly Shannon, recently retired Schenectady, uh, school district art teacher. She will be teaching in the spring, fine arts courses of three D design and drawing the upcoming spring semesters. Thanks to Dan Fogarty, Associate Dean of Academic and Student Affairs for his current work and rebranding process for the website. Also the new logo work and, um, and, uh, on page seven of the academic affairs reports, you can, uh, utilize it two links. One is to Greg's Welcome, uh, to FMCC and the other is to the founder, uh, excuse me, the global foundries partnership memo, which is on. And both of these obviously are attempts to get the news out about who we are, what we are. And, um, and all of that is, is, you know, part of our marketing attempt. Uh, the alumni spotlight of Dan Fogarty has really taken, uh, hold with that social media so that current students and faculty administration keep up with where our students are now. And so we're going to give a shout out to Sonali Kumar, criminal justice, uh, major whose new job is at Nike as a project administrator. To Hallie Johnson Martin, uh, in the teacher assistance program, working in an area school now and who plans to pursue her bachelor's in the spring. And the foundation certainly has been very active in supporting, um, and, and highlighting our alum as well. To Dan and Charlene Dybals for leadership presentations of the two thousand twenty-two cannabis expo in October. And in the, to, uh, Bill Winsman, FM foundation chair for providing a guest lecture in Larry Zuckerman's Business Two Six Three. It's Two Six Three Two, the fundamentals of investment. I understand he does that for us routinely. To the business department's money spam, money smart grad, Larry Zuckerman, Charlene Dybals and Mark Swain train new financial coaches for the nine mo- module non-credit curriculum for Money Smart, non-credit course for students. And it's, um, important to note that many instructors here across several disciplines have volunteered to coach in that program. We'd like to welcome Brian Mountleman to the Rad Tech team as a full-time instructor. Um, he has an interesting background in infectious diseases and global health policy. And he taught ESL in Korea. He sounds exactly like the kind of fellow that both Carolyn and, and Colin will, uh, put to, to very good use. And finally, thanks to Carolyn Bates' friends at Slate River Farms for donating eighty-five pounds of breastfed beef. And also on, in the report of the Rad Tech on page nine, there's an in- interesting summary of the traditionally accomplishments and the employment rates, um, for the Rad Tech program. So we have many people throughout the campus all over to thank. Um, and indeed we are thankful and I'm thankful to work with this one of the group of trustees and Diane Wazlins, who has the job of burning hats. Okay, so thank you very much and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Moving on to student affairs with trustee Salaman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to thank again Jackie for your concise report, very, very nice. For fall two thousand twenty-two FM has enrolled one thousand eight hundred and thirty students. This represents one thousand one hundred and eight full-time equivalent students. Um, the highlights of, uh, the student affairs, uh, student engagement at the commons. The common spirit week was held October thirty-first through November fourth. The activities involved theme days, including wicked radar Wednesday, where students, faculty and staff The activities involved theme days including wicked radar Wednesday, where students, faculty, and staff wore FMCC College gear and posted selfies to the new FMCC Student Involvement Facebook. The Ann Crad Coordinator for Student Involvement is actively engaged in new social media opportunities to promote campus events. This helps to inform students and the broader community of what is happening at campus. The Commons also held an open house, official open house on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-two to promote the space as supporting academic success and to foster a sense of community. Also want to say, November fifteenth was the Health Professions Open House. The sixteenth was STEM Open House and the seventeenth was business. Today was Business and Liberal Arts Open House tonight. Can imagine how wonderful they were. Thank you. The newly developed area is being utilized by more students in comparison to last year. The Trio EOP study area had five hundred and seventy-six visits by students in the month of October. This is two hundred and twenty-three more visits by students over this time last year. The Commons is truly supporting strategic goal number two. The equitable student experience, connecting and fostering meaningful relationships to build a sense of belonging for all students. And in a sensory and relaxing room, it's completed. And thanks in large part to assistance from Beth Carpenter and Karen Shaffer, who offered their creative skills. The sensory room provides a Colombian refuge for students and others in the campus community who have sensory special needs to decompress and regain focus. In addition to the bubble wall, crash pad, aromatherapy, and stress balls that had previously held, it is now boasting a relaxing picture of mountains, a yoga pad, upright swivel seating, and other amenities. Take advantage of it. And a new seasonal affective disorder therapy lab has also been installed. Students began using the room October twenty-sixth. The new website progresses. It's coming together nicely. Highlighting themes, including, but are not limited to, the FMCC difference, academic program, and individual studies offerings, college stats, faculty bios, admissions, financial aid, student accounts, and student experience sections. Consultant Rob Bellmary helped coordinate the website committee held on October sixth and tasked members with conducting an extensive review of their department's current website pages and to provide specific recommendations of the content to carry over to the new website. Website committee included the following people and includes the following people. Laura Laporte, Becky Kozakrea, Arlene Spencer, Jared DiMedisris, Robin Towne, Dan Fogarty, and Dan Towne. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. We'll move on to diversity, equity, and inclusion with Mr. Obama.
Well, thank you. That's real positive. So I've said to the students primarily. These are really interesting. I've learned quite a bit in there. And you have a new N R M L G T Q I A plus plus. And the point of the A on that is actually now. So there's more trainings going on in some areas of people who are allies supporting diversity. And that makes me feel a little better because I've talked about my race, gender, age. You know, now it's the same now. Which I always was saying, is interesting, is inclusive of others. And that is so important. Now, a parallel thought from that class came up with a woman who referred to as African-American. She said, that's an incorrect term. Because it's not just from Africa, there's separate countries. So we didn't know how prejudice works. So one gets people into the groups. I think this was really crucial when you saw that with the it translates Asians. One of the discussions that came out of that is, well, there's a whole lot of different people who are Asian. And so when we have these discussions, I think more importantly, it is we start to sort of differentiate between people and also find some common ground with that. We also got that's one issue about the, or talk about the golden rule of religious and secular ethics as, as one of the foundations of diversity and equity and inclusion. Sometimes is it's hard to pull people apart while we're finding the common ground. Instead, if you want to be somebody interesting, take a look at Karen Armstrong, intercharged passion. Very interesting statements on religion, not integrate others. And also some of the statistical topics, but these are the things that we do need to talk about in a civil matter. The system with that was turning more about the actual human rights. And some of the documents are out there as a foundation to stand on. So it's not secure as a legal document. This is actually a legal document that this part of the world is not. So, and of course, turning that into emotional intelligence. The, as I said, mutual, most emotional person on body communication. How do we talk to each other? How do we find common ground? They're not getting involved in one really exciting thing we're trying to come towards the United Nations fan. People did a lot of that. Their focus was certainly in the quality and substance of science. We're studying to get this, the economic science. That's important. That's like we visit all the long environmental justice. The environmental issue was more like interest is not, few of us in this world have gone so well like I did for a long time. Even one of those islands, turn the faucet comes out. So sort of understanding the effects of what's happening in the world environmentally is just how something that's the crucial part of education. We want to read something interesting. Take a look at University of Alabama, Diversity and Holiday. And we're in different, but you can wear what you can. It's a very long, terrifying in so many ways. Oh, back to the allies, one of the things are focusing on is creating a division between each other. I should say something. Oh, is that another place that I didn't hear from somebody else the other day? Just to make it clear, already referred to colleagues and young ladies. So, okay, this is not kind of how we talk to each other, but how we learn that. You should say something that you find incorrect. You tell me. But now being offended, having a mutual process. Yeah, let's see. Oh, Liam Brad did a fantastic job on the Native American case. You really should go down there and take a look at it. It's really well done. We appreciate the opportunity to do those things. But sometimes, you know, we're spreading it thin. We don't get the attention that we need to send. She's been very, very good with these things. Appreciate it. That's it for me.
Thank you question. I think you mentioned African-American students came to you and said, not everybody is from Africa. I was criticized by my son because I used that terminology. But how do you know? You know, you see the same tone and you assume they must. Unless you talk to that person and they know that you're from Haiti or East Africa. What is the right way way to understand a person?
You know, I think the most important thing is to just open doors and listen. Because we assume, and there's something called false consciousness for people in minority groups. It starts, they started to leave the, I mean, you see this second class desk because that's the very thing. The reason this came out is we applied Rosenberg National Communication Guidelines. This was so uncomfortable to just come out and say, African people didn't use the word African-American and start that dialogue. So I think you could ask someone to try to understand that.
Some kind of that came by you. They asked the student or anybody. I didn't want to reach out. Something like that. You know, I don't know. It was
Prodowns are coming through us soon.
Asking this question, what do you say? Do I have to go to call that person that they don't get offended?
Just ask.
Just ask, have you wanted to call me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was introduced to my first person identified as they like four years ago. And it took me back and I said, they, I just didn't register and I just, ah, okay. So it's, it's, it's different. Like anything else, it's and you just, what you do goes to the price, price thing, which is all new. And first, it's going to be a little confusing. Practice, you get used to it. You start to understand that these things are changing in gender roles, which bring you into a whole new cultural thing about how hard it is for people to accept this.
Can you imagine if you ask somebody, how do you want me to call you? Six months later, you forget. You know, that's another problem that we all have to be open to change.
Any other questions?
Moving on to accreditation with Jackie Sutter.
Thank you. I have a short report. Just wanted to share that we concluded the Self-Study Institute on November tenth. We now have all of the foundational elements to put our self-study design together. That will be due at the first part of the year, January. We'll be meeting with our middle states liaison, Dr. Pushman Hock, who also will be visiting our campus in the strain. So I just wanted to give you a brief update on the conclusion of the Self-Study Institute. Happy to answer any question.
And when our liaison comes, they'll be meeting with the board as well.
They will. There will be, it'll be a full day. So he will go over the self-study process and talk about the strategic goals, how it worked out. To our campus and to the self-study process. So with all of our stakeholders.
Thank you. And now we'll turn to personnel with trustee Jasowitz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank Connie Grant for the report. Jennifer has stolen my thunder on Brian Miguel Elpine, so I'll move on. We have another hire, Teresa Seabred, who starts October twenty-seventh. That's Principal Clerk in Finance Office. She's a alumni at Montgomery Union College, learning Associates Applied Science and Secundary Studies. Teresa worked fifteen years as an account clerk at the Greater Anstheim School District. Right to that position, she was a medical officer clerk for New Dimension in healthcare and assistant billing clerk for Japco Taxure MD. There's a vacancy search going on for a step, C-step director full-time. It's grant-funded recruitment coordinator and communication specialist full-time, senior account clerk full-time. And that will conclude my report, Madam Chair, unless there's any questions.
Thank you. So I know that trustee Perry will be devastated to know that the policy committee has something to report and she was unable to be here tonight. So in your packets, and I'm sorry, and at your places, there will be two items on the agenda for next month that we will have the opportunity to vote on. There is now a relevant policy requiring that first-year students live in student housing. That first-year, sorry, full-time students who relocate to, to attend college. Since that no college affiliated entity currently owns any college housing, there would be a motion to rescind that policy. And then there's also some proposed changes to the student use of drugs and alcohol, which really just appears to be cleaning up some grammatical and other language. There's nothing terribly substantive. So they're in your packets for review and they will be on the agendas for a vote next month. At this time, does, do any trustees have any other business to come before the board? I do not identify any reason tonight that we would have to go into executive session, but we will be holding a mini-retreat at the conclusion of the meeting for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Trustee Gardella, trustee Salamek, any opposition? All in favor? Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.